Did I steal your seat?
Whatever.
Matt, you have a signal. You tapped her on, but it should be live. I don't have a signal.
Yeah, what's this?
Okay, I don't.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heaven and father, thank you for allowing us to come here tonight. We ask that you would be with us as we make decisions that are in the best interest of the students at Eastern Green Schools. We also ask that you be with our community and the family of Nancy Hacker as they mourn her loss. Her deeds will live in the hearts of the faculty and the students long, long into the future. Finally, thank you for sending your son to be the beacon to guide us through the darkness. I'm praying in his name, amen.
Well, board members in lieu of us not having an elected president this time, do you want me to take us through until we get to that point?
Yeah, we'll have to.
Can you do those first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So will the four new members please stand? And I'm gonna read this little blurb here, and then at the end of it you're just gonna say, "I do." "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Indiana and the laws of the United States and the State of Indiana. I will faithfully execute the duties of my office as a member of this governing body, so help me God."
I do.
You're sworn in.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and do the call to order and all that?
Can we not elect a president? I think we usually do the organization.
Okay, that's perfectly fine.
Isn't that the way?
And then go from there? That works? Okay, so the first item on the docket is nomination of president. Any recommendations?
Scott Carmichael.
I'd like to nominate Matt Roberts.
Okay, so we have the nomination by Mike Adams. You still gonna go with your...
I said Scott Carmichael.
For Scott.
Oh, for me? Oh, okay, I thought you meant...
No, no, sorry. Nomination made by Mike Adams for Scott Carmichael. And then we have a motion by... A nomination by Scott Carmichael for Matt Roberts. Okay. We need someone to close the nomination.
I have to take the nomination for Scott Carmichael first, since it was made first. We have to either close it and second it, or...
You're correct, thank you. So does anybody wanna do that, close the nomination of Scott Carmichael? Okay, Heather Hudson. And then it needs to be seconded, correct? Anybody wanna second the nomination for Scott Carmichael?
So closing and seconding. I'll second, there we go.
Okay. And then we need to do the same thing for the other nomination, correct?
Take a vote on Scott if he passes.
Okay. So all those in favor of Scott Carmichael as school board president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They're gonna vote you in.
Okay, do this.
All those against, aye. So that passes four to one. Okay, so no need to move on to the other nominations. So, Mr. President, do you want to take over at this point?
All right, I'll...
Take places?
Yeah, somebody's gotta run this, just let it go, I guess. You know, this doesn't have to last a year.
That's true.
Guys are gonna look at this. Okay, recommendation for to nominate for vice president.
Matt Roberts.
I'll close. And I'll second.
It is recommended that Matt Roberts be vice president of the board for 2021, all those four. Okay, so... Board of, you're on line. Okay, recommendation. Anybody wanna recommend a recommendation for secretary?
Nominate Mike Adams. You have to stand.
I'll second.
It is recommended that Mike Adams be secretary of the board for 2020, all those four. All those against? I did the same thing.
Who closed that nomination?
I nominated.
You, who closed it?
I believe Heather closed, seconded by Sharon.
Okay.
Okay, it is recommended that Marilyn Burges be appointed corporation treasurer of the board for 2021 and set her bond. It's bond, not bail, right?
Yes.
For a hundred thousand dollars. It is also recommended that Gina Anderson be appointed deputy corporation treasurer. Have a motion. Matt Roberts?
Nurse.
Mike, sorry. Seconded by Matt, all those four. Five, zero, zero. Motion to advertise to seek quotes for a corporation legal counsel. Motion by Matt, seconded by Heather, all those four. Okay, it is recommended that directly scheduled board meetings be held on the... We still want to do the second Monday? Second Monday at 7:30 PM. Matt, or Mike, sorry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Heather, all those four, five, zero, zero. It is recommended that the board's annual salary be set at $2,000. Now the motion. Matt, seconded. Heather, all those four. Five, zero, zero. Okay. Now, on this one, it's recommended that Eastern Green Schools remain members of following organizations. You can read those there. We also wanted to add the ISBA.
Yeah, that's...
Indiana State School Board Association.
Yeah, I left that one off, Marilyn, that's my fault. So yeah, we want to add, make that in the record that Indiana School Board Association need to add that one.
Anybody wanna make a motion to approve these? Sharon? Seconded by Matt. All those four. Five, zero, zero. Okay, it is recommended that conflict of interest statements be approved for the following individuals. From children, Matt Roberts, thirteen men, these are all concerning, they have family working in the school. For that, it's for that purpose. Anybody wanna make a motion? Mike, seconded by Heather, all those four. Three, zero, and you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, this one, three, zero, one, I assumed that, sorry.
Yep.
Four, zero.
Four, zero.
I cannot count myself, sorry. It is recommended that the board appoint... Anybody wanna...
Sharon apps.
Sharon apps, for a legislative liaison. Sounds good to me.
Yes.
All those four. You can vote for yourself, Sharon.
Oh, sure.
I'll make a motion, sorry.
Motion, second.
Sorry. Matt, and then Heather will be the seconded by. Okay, now all those four. You can vote for yourself, it's okay. Five, zero. It is recommended that the board appoint as policy liaison, anybody wanna nominate Heather? Okay, so Heather Hudson is the policy liaison, make a motion by Mike. Seconded by Sharon. All those four.
Thank you.
Okay, five, zero, zero. It is recommended that Trent Provost Superintendent be appointed as director and LEA representative of federal programs and represent the interests of Eastern Green Schools on the Hoosier-Hartland Trust, the Indiana Trust, ESCRFT Board, and Mendros Natural Gas Cooperative. Mike Adams, motion by. Seconded by Matt, all those four. Five, zero, zero. It is recommended that the organization meeting be adjourned at...
6:44.
6:44, anybody wanna make a motion? Mike, seconded by Heather, all those four. Okay, I guess we are adjourned. Okay, so we call the river meeting to order? Okay. The meeting is called to order at 6:45 PM by representative myself, Scott Carmichael. Okay, the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and importance of allowing members of the public to express concerns regarding agenda items. Comments will be limited to board meeting agenda items with a time limit of three to five minutes. Does anybody have any comments they wanna make? Okay, we'll move on. It is recommended the agenda for January 22nd, 2021.
Should be out this spring.
Yes, inside.
January 11th.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's recommended that the agenda for the January 11th, 2021 meetings be approved as presented with additions, corrections, and deletions as recommended by the board. Motion by Sharon, seconded by Matt, all those four. Five, zero, zero. It is recommended that the meetings for the December 14th, 2020 meetings be approved as presented. Motion by Mike.
I think you guys will have to abstain.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
The abstentions go with...
Seconded by Matt, all those four. Three, zero, and you two abstain. Okay, three, zero, two. Okay, it is recommended that the planes number 13106 through...
13179.
Be approved as presented, motion by Mike, seconded by Matt, all those four. Five, zero, zero. Okay. Yeah, sure, why not?
Okay, so next we have a lot of our corporation business. First item here is I'm recommending to alter the 2020, 2021 calendar, school calendar, to make January 18th a school day. Right now, it's a, it's a makeup day on the calendar. Obviously with us being virtual and us wanting to get back person to person if we can next week, it makes sense to make that a school day. What that will also do is alter the end of the school year date. So we'll move that back one day. Right now, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but we'll, we'll get that calendar altered if it passes and get that, the altered calendar put on the website. Because like I said, we'll trim one day off the, off the edge, so that would be my recommendation.
I have a motion, Mike. Seconded by Heather, all those four. Five, zero.
Um, I would like to make a request to the board, that's our next item here, to get permission to advertise for mowing bids. We did this last year, I think it worked out very well, but I made it clear to all involved that we wouldn't just award it again to the same person, we would take competitive bids again. I think that's only fair. So I'm just asking the board to once again grant me permission to advertise for mowing bids for the spring.
Okay, do we have a motion? Heather, second, Sharon, all those four. Five, zero, zero.
Next, I'm making a recommendation to approve myself and treasurer to solicit from Green County financial institutions who provide FDIC insurance coverage and public depository insurance by the Indiana Board of Depositories, investment quotations for available funds and constant investments in the best interest of the school corporation.
Okay, do we have a motion? Matt, second. Heather, all those four. Five, zero, zero.
Next up, we have personnel. A decent amount of stuff to do in personnel this evening. First of all, it's the time of the year where we typically approve renewal of administrative contracts. I don't want anybody to read into this one because obviously Amanda Givney's not on there, but since she was a new hire just this year, her contract won't roll till a year from now, and then all administrators will be on the same cycle. So as of right now, there's, I'm asking for, or I'm recommending to approve the renewal of administrative contracts for Eric Kirkendall and Patrick Hall for the 21-22 school year. I am making a recommendation to increase the salary of Mr. Kirkendall, Mr. Hall, and Amanda Givney by $1,000 to mirror teacher increases. I'm recommending to set central office staff salaries to the following levels. Treasurer, $46,000. Payroll benefits, $41,320. And human resources slash transportation, $39,240. Making a recommendation to approve Lindsay Bailey as director of special education effective July 1st, 2021. Just to say something about that really quickly, just to remind everybody who might be watching and have forgotten about this, but we will no longer be part of joint services as of June 30th of this year. We did make attempts to join some other co-ops, those did not work. It's kind of a weird time with that, a lot of people don't want to allow in new, new people to co-ops. So we started looking at, can we do this on our own? I believe we can, both financially and with a few hires that we need to make. This is the first hire we wanted to get done, so then we have the director, and the director can kind of come on board a little bit and help us make some of the other hires we need to make. I did not put in here what the contract was gonna be for, but I can just do that publicly right now. It's gonna be a 215-day contract, salary of $71,000. And I don't know, is Lindsay here tonight? I think she said she was, there she is. So thank you very much, Lindsay, for coming on board. I think a lot of you know Lindsay already, she was our school psych here for several years. I got to know her very quickly when I was at North Lawrence, and we had a lot of good conversations, and it's just worked out, and I think this is gonna be a wonderful addition to our staff. So thank you very much for accepting the position, we just gotta get you board approved here in a little bit. I'm gonna recommend to approve Josh Slosser for the high school maintenance position. I want to thank Mr. Kirkendall and Mr. Wiggington for the many hours we spent together trying to get this hired. We started, I think I look back, we started this whole process back in September, and we had some very good candidates, it just wasn't working out. We offered the job three times before we finally got to this gentleman here, and I do not believe one bit we are settling at all. It just, Josh happened to see it. He's gonna be a wonderful addition to our, to our maintenance staff, so we're glad to have him coming on board if we get this approved. I'm gonna make a recommendation to approve Rebecca Lloyd as instructional assistant at Eastern Green Elementary. Recommending to approve Kaylee Michael for the open 40-hour-per-week custodial position. Recommendation to increase hourly pay by 50 cents an hour for the following employee groups. All school building office staff, instructional assistants and facilitators, and all custodial staff. So we are almost to the point with the exception of a couple people that I've already talked to that we're gonna move in that direction here soon, of getting everybody some money this year. And that makes me very happy that we've been able to do that.
Is that a code maintenance?
No, not right, not at this point. I'm gonna look at maintenance here in the next couple months because we've had some new hires there. So we'll be looking at them closer to April and May to get them some possible pay increases, depending on what, what happens with some things in maintenance, so... But yeah, just about everybody other than the maintenance, we've, we've touched on. But I've talked to maintenance already about that, and they understand what's, what's gonna be coming down the, down the pipe. So happy to be able to do that for all of our employees. Staff resignations, a recommendation to approve the resignation of Jayce Spice as full-time custodian. And I believe that is it for the personnel board.
All right, do you have a motion for approval? Matt, seconded by Sharon, all those four. Five, zero, zero.
Okay, late items. We do have some other personnel items on the late items. We have a recommendation to approve the resignation of Jared Spice as a full-time custodian.
Okay, all those, any motion, sorry. Heather, seconded by Mike, all those four. Five, zero, zero.
I'm making a recommendation to hire Tammy Basie as a special education consultant for two to three days a month at a rate of $200 per day. A little explanation behind that. We have, some of our identified students have things written in their IEP that allows them some consultation services for autism and behavioral issues that they might have. Basically, it's just a time for them to be able to talk with somebody, go through some different coping mechanisms, things like that that they might need. We tried covering that this first semester on our own, and we had some just wonderful people trying to do that, but it is a definite stretch for our staff to do that. So I think we're getting a steal having Tammy come in and help us out for $200 a day, and she's more than willing to do that. And that's all the more it would probably take, is that two to three days. So next year, when we are on our own as a special education, we will have staff available to do that with some, some creative ways of adjusting people. So that would be my recommendation to the board.
Do you have a motion? Sharon, second. Heather, all those four. Five, zero, zero.
I'm making a recommendation to increase the salary of Debbie Babcock by $1,000 to mirror teacher increases.
Have a motion for that? Heather? Second by Sharon? All those four? Five zero zero.
Making a recommendation to hire Emily Black for the high school girls' track coaching position.
Have a motion? Matt? Second? Mike? All those four?
Recommending to hire Bill Valentine for the high school boys' track coaching position.
Got a motion? Mike? Second by Matt? All those four? Five zero zero.
Making a recommendation to hire Wesley Arthur for the high school boys' baseball coaching position.
Motion by Mike? Second by Matt? All those four? Five zero zero.
Uh, recommending to hire James Tommy Bell for the high school girls' varsity softball coaching position.
Motion by Mike? Second by Sharon? All those four?
Recommend, recommendation to hire Philip Uphold for the high school girls' varsity softball assistant coaching position.
Motion by Mike? Second by Heather? All those four?
Uh, recommending to hire Jacob Carmichael for the high school boys' varsity golf coaching position.
Motion by Matt? Second by Heather? All those four? Five zero zero.
Next up is I'm recommending that we surplus and recycle the listed technology items as presented. Board members, I emailed that, that list. Um, it's just a lot of, uh, things that are out of date, no longer really useful. It's a bunch of monitors and, and older computers and things like that. And we can send that off for recycling. And this is just the, the start. We'll probably have more for you in February. So just letting you know.
Do you have a motion? Heather? Second? Mike? All those four?
Thank you. And I believe that is it for our late items. Next on our agenda, we have, uh, Mrs. Kim Hill is going to do a short presentation for us on the, uh, interactive display boards that you see up front here. We are, um, looking into starting to replace some of our current boards we have in our classrooms because as we all know, uh, the longer you have technology, the more obsolete it gets. So we're looking to update some of those and we wanted the public and the board to see what these are like. So, uh, Mrs. Hill, you can take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Provo. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, good. So, uh, as, as we introduce time, Kimberly Hill, I know most of you. I'll try not to raise your hand so much. You've been doing that quite a bit already this evening. So I wanted to just give you a quick demonstration of what the particular ViewSonic board we're looking at. Uh, elementary teachers have already had some access to it. Uh, middle school and high school were scheduled to, and then we went virtual. So it's been kind of a hiccup in the plan. So with that said, uh, I made some notes so I don't forget anything. So many of our current classrooms, smart boards, pop-up systems, projectors, document cameras are all becoming obsolete. Uh, they're out of warranty, they're becoming more expensive to replace or repair. So with that in mind, we began to research options. And this is one that we came up with. So I'm going to just do it real quick. It's a minute and thirty-second video, but it gives you a really good idea of what capabilities just the board itself has, not to mention what it will do for our teachers and students.
Ultra HD resolution and an advanced next-generation iHeart touchscreen. The ViewSonic Viewboard IFP 50 series of interactive flat panel displays deliver incredible collaborative capabilities for 21st century boardrooms and classrooms. Available in 55-inch, 65-inch, 75-inch, 86-inch, and 98-inch screen sizes. There is a few more to fit any environment. Thanks to ultra-flying iTouch technology, Viewboard interactive displays deliver an ultra-smooth, natural handwriting experience. 20-point touch allows multiple users to simultaneously write or draw on the display's surface using styluses or their fingers, or both at the same time. While dual-tip pen support allows users to simultaneously write or draw with two different colors. The Viewboard display also includes MyViewBoard digital whiteboard and software for advanced content sharing capabilities. Convenient features include secure single silence to your favorite cloud drives, easy conversion of common Office files, QR code sharing, cloud-based portability, notebook and flip chart file importing, and much more. With just a single click, the integrated Viewboard cast software allows users to seamlessly scroll content from Windows, Mac, iOS, Pro, and Android devices onto the Viewboard display. For added convenience, a ViewSonic SmartPort USB function allows devices to be plugged into any video source on the display while still providing simultaneous access to the space from facing USB ports. Dual 10-watt stereo speakers and a 15-watt subwoofer combine with amazing 4K Ultra HD resolution delivers incredible green feeling sound and breathtaking glare-like images for immersive all-day viewing experience. To learn more, visit wwwviewsonic.com.
As you can tell, it is, uh, pretty loud for this size of a room. So in our classrooms, of course, we wouldn't have to have all of the added wiring that we have to our AV or, um, speaker, sound systems, all those other things. Technically, this only has two wires that connects to the computer. Right now, this specific one has a computer built onto it. And this demo board is something that will stay in our building. So it's kind of nice. We do have this one local unit at this time. So we received this demonstration board of probably late September, early October. And I wanted to just share with you a couple of ways that the teachers had already been using it. It's kind of a cool little, come on, work with me. Here we go. Okay, so this is Ms. Schrader's first grade, uh, Globetrotter class. And every, so often they, um, venture around the world virtually. And this is when her students were able to meet with Sri Lanka, someone from Sri Lanka. She's here and she will probably be with us in the executive session in case you have more questions on that. And if, I'm not sure if you can see it or not, but in this area right here is the Skype cart. And this is usually what they would use to talk to someone else from around the world. And then, whoa, I got, I got two close students. See how much it is? And now they have this huge screen. This is a 65-inch. So they had a really amazing time. They were so excited. Then, um, this is Ms. Deckard's kindergarten class. And in our more detailed description, you'll see what her class usually looks like on her smart board when she's trying to do a story and what it looks like with the Sonic. And then, this is Ms. Niedler's class. She usually does all of her virtual teaching from a laptop. She was much more engaged because she could see her kids so much more on this giant screen. So not only are we going to provide student engagement, but wouldn't it be nice to be able to talk to your kids this way versus this little detailed screen? And then the last thing I just wanted to show you, uh, Ms. Busker, who I think is also here tonight, was teaching long division. And she also did a snowman video. So if you would like to, uh, see her teaching long division with snowmen, she, uh, that's in a Google folder that you guys received earlier this evening. And then this is Mrs. Price. This is our, she's our intermediate specialty teacher. And she was able to actually pull up the curriculum from iMath and put it on the board and model to the students online, virtually, how to fill out the page because they were struggling. So she, instead of having just a little tiny piece of paper, she was able to blow the entire thing up. This is an amazing piece of equipment. So I look forward to executive meeting giving you a little, a whole lot more detail. Just wanted to showcase a few special things. Now I am going to take it out while you do your next part of your meeting. So I'll try not to, uh...
I do want to publicly thank you for kind of taking the lead on this. Um, originally, we were looking at, at using title funds, which we still can, to replace a lot of our boards. But when we saw how neat these were, um, we were maybe going to strategize a little bit how we could use some more funds to replace more than just, um, maybe just elementary, looking at the middle school and the high school too. So that's what we have to discuss a little bit as a board. So thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
How, what was the teacher feedback on?
Um, Mrs. Hill?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Adams is asking what the teacher feedback has been like for these boards.
Uh, when we get to executive session, I have a file folder for you with, uh, teacher feedback. But there are a couple of people here tonight if you would like to express. I got several here that would probably be able to get a, just a hands-on real quick. Somebody stand up.
Yes, I'm Ms. Schrader. Um, I teach first grade. I was the, one of the slideshow, we were going around the world for her many days and I gave the presentation with the board. And this board is super, super user-friendly and really easy for the kids to navigate to. They were blown away by it. It, I mean, I was blown away by how much it cuts out, like how much work it cuts out on my end. So it makes it so much easier to do so many more things in one place than having to go from the computer to the smart board to the document camera, go back and forth. It's all in one place. It's so easy to use. It was really engaging and I'm really excited about it.
And my fourth graders, we were scheduled to get it at the time we went virtual. And so the first or second day that we were on the computer, I was using that to teach. Where I had my laptop set up and then I was teaching from the screen. And then when I had to pass it to the next classroom, my kids all complained, "We can't see the board now." Because then I was trying to use my smart board and it wasn't dark enough. And so I was having to turn off the lights and just things because they were having trouble seeing it, which is a normal problem in my classroom anyway, because the smart board that we currently have, um, with things that are going out on it, it's hard for the students to be able to see. And like on math problems, certain colors you cannot see. So if something is colored in light blue for like fractions and they're having to find equivalents for, or a perimeter or area, um, I have to then take a draw around a color for the students to see because they can't see it on the normal board when they're in the classroom. So they were blown away by how clearly they could actually see our math and reading curriculum on the computer through that screen. And they're like, "Is it going to be in our room when we get back?" And I'm like, "No, because it's got to go to other classrooms." But, uh, I would love to have one of those in my room full-time.
I'll just take you back what they both said. Um, I agree with Summer a lot in that, um, typically with younger kiddos, we use so many, um, manipulatives and just hands-on things are kind of all over the room. And it's so, all of the tools that we normally are trying to piece together to make it visual and interactive for them, this cut that down and made it super easy. Everything just sucked. I mean, it was just, it was really, um, fluid. So, um, that was good. I also, um, wanted to say, I used it for about a week and was so impressed, um, that I ended up ordering one for a church, um, for kids there to use. And, um, I have some older volunteers that help teach. And I kind of told them about it and, um, talked to them about it. And the fact that it's a computer and it's not like four different devices that they have to learn to use, they're pretty excited that they know how to use their computer at home. You just pull up the program just like they've already been used to doing at home and it's fully interactive on there. So it's, it's really, um, user-friendly for anybody. Even if we have a sub, I feel like the substitute teachers aren't going to need to know how to use ten different things. They just need to know how to use a computer to use what we're needing. Um, also, I just think it's really special for younger kids. They sell a movable mount. So the way our smart boards work now, if we don't have a stage in our room, my kids can't interact with the smart board. They can't reach it. So we either have to build a giant stage for them to get up on, or they just can't interact with the board. Um, this is not that case. I was able to, they sell a movable mount and the board can just slide down. It's just an electronic mount. It slides down and they can touch and interact with the whole thing. So, um, that's super cool. And we also got that for our church, so, um, yeah.
Thank you, Ms.
Any other teacher comments? Okay. Thank you so much once again. Uh, we're ready for discussion information items. Real quick, before I, what the, uh, principals talk, uh, first of all, I want to remind everybody, we did not do students of the month this month. We're going to get back to that in February. So we haven't discontinued that. It's just, we've been on virtual here for a while. We thought it was best just to not have them for January. We'll get back to that in February. Uh, the other thing is, I guess, I talked about Lindsay being here, but any of our other new hires, any new hires here tonight? I want to leave anybody out. Who we got?
Wes is here for baseball.
Okay, thanks, Wes. Congratulations. Thanks for joining us in Eastern Green. Okay, with that, um, principals, do you want to come up? Mr. Kirkendall, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start.
Um, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Ms. Heather Hudson and Ms. Jessica Martindale-Lindsay, and all of the community, uh, for their thought, uh, for them thinking of our staff during the Christmas season, the gift bags. Um, it was such a, a much welcome, positive, uh, treat for our staff, um, to know that the community was thinking of them and, uh, kind of real supporting them through the holidays. So I just want to thank you very much, uh, for spearheading that effort. And, uh, and again, thank you for all the community members that took part in that. And also to all the businesses, uh, I thank you to all the businesses for, for donating different, that have different items. The only other thing that I would like to do is, uh, announce our Rising Star recipients. Um, so, uh, every year, um, we have the Rising Stars of Indiana, which is a non-competitive recognition program designed to honor high school juniors for their academic achievements. By, uh, allowing schools to identify outstanding scholars who are in their junior year, um, the goal is to increase the visi, their visibility and scholarship opportunities. Uh, schools select four nominees, uh, based on criteria such as standardized test scores, academic achievements, extracurricular activities, um, both academic and non-academic, leadership, community service, uh, and involvement. And so without further ado, we'd like to announce that Eastern Green's Rising Stars for the 20, uh, 2021 school year are Kale Helms, Anna Teeman, Barrett Teeman, and Will Valentine. So I want to congratulate those four students. Um, I, I know all four of them, um, and they do a heck of a job. I'm really proud of them. So, um, those are my announcements. Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you very much. Who's next? Mr. Alt?
Glasses are already fogged up. I'm sorry. Make that mistake all the time. Want to say thanks to Kim Hill for kind of being the backbone of this. It would be nice if we could, if we can all get these, uh, these smart boards for sure. So thanks to Kim for that. Um, good to see you, Marilyn. This is the second time I've seen you around the back. Missed your, your smiling face. Um, I'll thank Heather as well and, and, and Janelle's, uh, work for, for all of their work and, and all the businesses that donated. We don't have everything over here yet and since we haven't been in person, we haven't given. Uh, but just to be able to, um, to give something during the holidays, especially with everything going on these days, to somebody and put a smile on their face is going to be really nice. So thanks for walking in here. Just going to kind of read straight from here. I wrote some thoughts down today. This is a little different than I've done for the past few years. Don't, don't be scared, Mr. Provo. But, uh, I'm just going to read straight from here. Thank you to the office staff for all they've done since we've been back. Thank you to our faculty and staff for all their continued hard work teaching virtually. Thank you to our cafe ladies for their work in getting meals to our students. Lastly, thank you to our maintenance and custodial staff for their efforts. We have our second water bottle filler, which is on side mill, which is huge. I would say that the unknown, along with a, a double workload for most folks, is grueling and everyone is marching through it, doing their best and smiling. So really appreciate that. Quick thank you to administration team and Mr. Provo. Uh, yeah, we are making some tough decisions, Mr. Provo is. And, uh, but every single decision we make, we discuss how it's going to affect students and adults that work within our buildings. And so, um, we, we're trying to keep everybody's best interest at heart with the decisions we make. Our board cards went out last Friday. Want to thank Debbie Babcock. And I have people say throughout the year, "I, I wouldn't want your job, Mr. Alt." Um, I, I wouldn't want yours this year. Arguably the most stressful, you know, and I, I just, I give you all the credit in the world and we appreciate you. Want to let the elementary know that we are thinking of them in these hard... Want to let the elementary know that we are thinking of them in these hard times. Sandy and I were talking last week and she's a very glass half-full positive person. We decided together at the same time, there's just a lot of gloom right now with many people being sick. Many of us are connected with someone that is sick or in the hospital with COVID. Many of us have friends or family members battling COVID or with a terminal illness. I feel like now more than ever, we should lift each other up and be there for each other. I didn't know Nancy had to very well, but she was always very kind of me and that smile, I'll never forget. I wrote her on December thirteenth. And the, the one thing that I took from our back and forth was this, and I'm going to quote her, all right? She said, "I feel so fortunate to be a part of the Eastern Green family. We live in a very loving, caring, and supportive community." So for Nancy's legacy and also just because it's the right thing to do, I think we all need to remember everybody in our community to be loving, caring, and supportive, just as she described to me that day. And we will get through all this together. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. And Mrs. Tiffany?
Hi, um, it's been a busy couple of weeks with virtual learning. So I just want to thank, um, all of our staff members for the hard work to finish out the first semester and then get started into the second semester. So in December at elementary, we did have our Christmas drive-through and it was great to see our families. It was really cold outside. We were outside for about an hour and a half, but I was worried about how cold it would be. But the time went by really fast because we had a really nice turnout. It was so nice to see our students and, um, I think our students enjoyed seeing their teachers as well. So that was a great event. And I also want to thank, um, Kim Hill and all of the teachers that attended tonight to speak to the ViewSonic board. I've been in the classrooms when the teachers have used them. Sometimes I'll just kind of walk by and randomly see that they're using the board. And it's amazing to see the student engagement, um, when they're using that board in their classroom. So thank you to all of the teachers that have tested that out because sometimes trying new technology can be a bit intimidating. But they've really, um, they've really embraced it. So, um, but I also want to recognize Nancy Hacker. I'd like to thank her for her 32 years of service at Eastern Green Elementary. And I mean, many of you know that Nancy passed away on January the seventh this past week. And Nancy was a vital and special member of our school family. She touched many lives throughout the years with her contagious smile, her positive attitude, and her encouraging words. And our students were blessed to have her as their biggest cheerleader. They all loved Nancy and she loved them. On a personal note, I wish I could have known Nancy as long as many of you in the community did. In the short time that I knew her, I was greatly impacted by her positive and her larger-than-life personality. I can assure you that her spirit and legacy will continue to live on throughout our hallways and classrooms. Every single one of us is better for knowing Nancy Hacker. Those that knew Nancy can tell you that just the mention of Nancy's name will inevitably lead to a fun-loving story that is sure to make you smile and probably laugh and, you know, just warm your heart. But our thoughts are with her family and we ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well. So in lieu of flowers, the family has asked that you contribute, um, that memorial contributions we made to the Eastern Green Family Resource Fund. And I will tell you that we are going to miss our biggest cheerleader and our number one thunderbird. And Nancy, you will live on in our hearts and our school community forever. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a few statements before we let any board members discuss or talk about anything. Want to say thank you to our teachers, all of our school staff, every single member of our school staff. This has been very interesting last few weeks with, um, you know, virtual before break and coming back to, to virtual. Not an easy way to teach at all. I completely understand that. But like Mr. Alt said, uh, as, as administrative, administrative team, we really do sit down. And when we have to make a tough decision, we literally discuss, you know, how's this affecting kids? How's this affecting our staff? And the best thing we can do is make a decision using our, our head and our heart. And that's kind of what I've been telling people of how we've been making these decisions. So I just want to thank everybody for their cooperation, their patience, um, their willingness to work with us. There is not a single decision that gets made in this time that's, that's not difficult. Every single, every single decision that's put in front of us that has to do with COVID or anything like it is difficult. It seems like it's, it's really 50/50 out there of you're really going to make half of them happy, half of them mad. And, uh, but we just have to do what's best for our kids and our, our staff. And that's what we've tried to do. But thank you, everybody who is playing a role in helping get us through this. The plan for announcing, uh, school attendance for next week, uh, we plan to announce that on Wednesday. We wanted to get at these next couple of days to see what our staffing looks like come Wednesday. Also obviously take a look at our, um, our community spread on that Wednesday. That's when our school, our county color comes out, which it's going to be red again because you can't move backwards until you have two full weeks of improvement. But at least we can see, are we still trending up or are we kind of staying stable? But at some point on Wednesday, we will make the announcement for what we're going to do, uh, next week. So wanted to let everybody know about that. So, uh, I think that's all I have at this time.
Kelly, Kelly, if you want a second? Sharon? Mike?
It's exciting to be here.
Mike? Only thing I want to say, I too, um, yeah, I've been thinking about Nancy and her family a lot, you know? We were very lucky to have somebody like her in our school. You know, for many years I dropped off my kids out back and just the sheer smile she put on the kids' faces in the morning. You know, she allowed a lot of kids to, you know, come into the school with a smile. And I think that's huge, you know? That just that bigger-than-life personality that, you know, every, quite the love she showed for those kids coming in allowed them to start their day off better. And I, I mean, it's, it seems like a little thing, but I think it's huge for the staff, you know? And huge for those kids seeing that much love coming into the school every morning. So my heart goes out to their family. Other than that, um, I recommend we, at, at seven twenty-five, um, you make your motion to adjourn. Matt? Second by Mike, all those four. Okay, don't do it, we'll still have more fun.
Yeah, we got one last little thing to do here.
I guess they're, they have nominations, they have to give them to you next month. Okay, uh, call the Board of Finance meeting to order at seven twenty-six PM. Anybody want to nominate somebody for the?
I'd like to nominate Ron Childers.
Okay, recommendation was made to nominate Ron Childers as the president of the Board of Finance for 2020. I think he's watching, so we're on this.
I'll, I'll second them.
Okay. Scott, Scott closed it, Heather seconded it.
Yeah. It's recommended that Ron Childers be the president of the Board of Finance for 2020. All those four. Five zero zero. And I want to recommend for the secretary of the Board of Finance. Can we round nominate Ron for that as well?
I'll nominate Heather Hudson.
Okay. Recommendation was made to nominate Heather, Heather Hudson as the secretary of the Board of Finance for 2020. I'll close it. Wait one second. Sharon? It's recommended that Heather Hudson be the secretary of the Board of Finance for 2020. All those four. Didn't vote for it though. Okay, four, uh, four zero one. It is recommended that the financial meeting be adjourned at seven twenty-seven. Anybody want to make a motion? Matt? May I second it? Mike, all those four. Five zero zero. Zero down.
Zero down. Thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it.